I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence, please? Councilor Schneider?
Here.
Councilor Stickley?
Here.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Here.
Councilor Stewart?
Here.
And Councilor Fry?
Here.
We have five members present in the floor. Council had time to read our prior meeting minutes. Do you have a motion to move on those, please?
I would make that motion. A second.
Motion to approve the prior meeting's minutes moved by Councilor Stickley and executed by Councilor Schneider. Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Councilor Stewart?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries. I have no one wishing to speak at council meeting tonight. I do have one individual that needs some discussion at this meeting instead for his Boy Scout agenda, so we will try to look that in.
Let's help us a bit.
I told him that you say not too hard to do, so thank you for coming in, so we'll try not to be too boring. Alrighty, so we're gonna move on to our committee reports. Park Board.
Park Board, Matt. Tuesday, June 12th. John had reported that the air conditioning went out at Homecoming Shelter House on Friday, and we had, I think that weekend, three different people running that facility. And so it was recommended by the Park Board that we give a discount of $80 to two of them and $40 to another one for the inconvenience of not having the air conditioning. Also, they had discussed getting it fixed. It was also recommended the city purchase a new air conditioning unit, so we got two recommendations for that particular thing. We also met at the swimming pool and did a little walk around to view the pool and its facilities. There was some discussion on landscaping, and also there was some concern in the men's restroom where there was some water pooling in a place that probably shouldn't be. Also, Harold had scheduled a meeting and the Washington Rec Association to talk about rearranging some of the way that the Washington Rec Association, the members are. And I guess that's all I have.
So really, you didn't have any action in any of this, but a lot of discussion on what needs to be done at the pool with the landscaping?
Right.
Is there any more discussion on any of this before I follow through with that?
No. Just two recommendations.
Do you have a recommendation? Oh, yes, on the cost. Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, Tom or the mayor, or maybe even Harold, at some point, the change in the relationship between the WRA and the city, well, at some point, that passed through for approval by the City Council, or is that something that's handled administratively?
Still working.
I think the thought is to, we had, so where we're at in that process is we've had, I think, a couple of meetings, and we have something, I think, that folks are happy with at this present point. The next step is to get it to Dennis to take a look at as the head of the Public Works and probably of the mayor. And then from then, I think, once we have something we're comfortable with, to get that in front of a committee, so council can take a look at it, or council, yeah, certainly you guys can take a look at that.
WRA Board, have all of them seen this then, or just members of the WRA?
No, just a couple of members of WRA. So I think what we'll do is probably let them see it as a group.
Whole Board?
Yeah, because maybe we need to do that before we...
Well, maybe they can see it as well as council and whole can see it at the same, you know, once it's all finished.
Sure.
That way.
They're gonna wanna see it, too. Yeah, make sure they're comfortable with it. You know, it's certainly open to tweaking as we go through the process, let everybody see it, get input, and up to something that folks are willing to...
It's close to being finalized, then?
Well, the initial draft, yeah.
Yeah. All right, great. Let's see, as far as the landscaping, I appreciate you guys noticing that, as well as many others did, and that has been checked into with John Harps. And they met last Wednesday with the company, and they are going to be rectifying that. You did check with the contract, and that will be taken care of.
Just a thought on that, the, I noticed in the finance, though, to approve the bills, we still owe them like $6,000. Is that towards that? I'm just wondering, do we have to approve that particular amount of money before they...
It's gonna be rectified before finalized. This woman and I understood, correct, that, the landscaping?
Well, I'm assuming they'll take care of that, so it's consistent with what the plan's called for, and the city's happy with it.
I guess my concern is, are we gonna pay, be paying for that particular thing before it's even done?
That's what we just said. I think it's gonna be rectified before they get their finalized payment on it, because it was not completed the way it should've been done.
So approving the bills today?
Right.
Wouldn't necessarily cut them a check before it's fixed? If that's the case. People are generally more motivated if they saw this money paid in.
I think John talked to them and told them that this is not, I mean, it's not even up to where our hydrants are, should be as far as sod and seeding and topsoil, and they said they would fix it just back, so...
There's also another little bit of a problem inside the men's restroom that ought to be taken care of before we finalize the bill, too.
Was that discussed with John, too?
Yes.
At the meeting?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, so...
Was it Harold?
We pointed it out, I don't know if it was gonna be rectified, Mayor.
Has it been pooling under the urinals?
It's a pooling under the urinals.
It's pooling under the urinals, and maybe, you know, I don't know. I didn't speak with John on that issue, but maybe the company could come in and...
Was he at the meeting?
Yes.
All right.
I got there late, I didn't realize it was gonna be after pool, so I rode in like all over town trying to find where we were supposed to meet up.
I didn't love it. Okay.
And he was on a bicycle, Mayor, so it took a while.
Good for you.
You should get a utility.
I know.
Yeah, good for you.
What about the concession stand issue, too?
Continuing, yeah.
Now, have you seen it?
As far as the sinks, you mean?
Yes.
Yeah, that's still in continuous, and I don't think that will be rectified until Dennis gets back, because he has to make the decisions on, you know...
I mean, possibly enlarging the concession stand to put everything in the way it should be. There's really not much story.
That's not gonna be done until the end of the season, though. We won't be able to do that now, and budgeted and stuff.
Yeah, but could you still hold some back on payment? Otherwise...
I think that's gonna be, I don't know if we can do that now.
Well, I think the idea would be that, and of course, I did refer Dennis on this, but I think we, before we release the final funds, we would wanna have a walkthrough, and these, as part of that process, these issues would be discussed in any given...
All right, and I thought we were working on getting the four sink in there, too, to work, so that that would work. So that's what the option, the way we were moving forward, was to be able to do that versus putting on in addition. So that, but we have to, that's what we were moving forward, and that's what John was looking into.
But at least you have enough room to do everything else that we do, because it's pretty small.
Right, it is small, but if we can at least get away with being able to do the four sinks where we can do the cooking in there, that's what we wanna move forward with. It's just, I think we're waiting on Dennis to get back to make sure that we can get the plumbing in there to get that all done. But you're right about the finishing up of the funding, with that. And I think that's probably gonna be long-winded when Dennis looks at that.
Yeah, yeah.
And council discussion, maybe, and next committee of the whole with our city solicitor on how we're gonna deal with that.
There was one issue on the pool that was talked down there. Steve talked about it, and so did Rick, about actually putting more sidewalk around it so people can walk the perimeter also.
Right. Yeah, we just had a discussion on that, and it is in the plan this fall to pour concrete on leg it, so I was stating that if we're gonna pour, that would be the best time to do it with our public works. But I would hate to see it being done in the summertime, because then we're gonna have to take a day to pour, which means no swim, because you don't want anybody walking through it, and then another, you know, to have to cut it out and frame it and everything else, then you wanna pour it. I would think it'd be best when they're in school to be able to frame, pour, and cut, and then be able to let them come in at the end of the day. I don't know. I think, again, that's gonna be up to John, when his men are gonna be available to do it, and how much we really wanna put, where, and it's gonna be best. But I agree, you don't want the grass blowing into the...
I'd hate to see it.
Something we didn't have on our specs was concrete all the way around.
I understand. Just like, we talked, and we would hate to see us landscape it, grass it up to there, then have to come back and tear that all back out again. So, I don't know, if we can say, you know, landscape it from this point down, because if we're gonna take five feet out or whatever for concrete, we shouldn't have to put topsoil and seed it all in, and grass it, people are gonna tear it all back up again. So I don't know.
Well, I guess I would suggest that, you know, you figure out where you're gonna wanna put it in, and go from there.
That's what Steve and Rick and I was talking about down there, and we just said, you know, I'd hate to see them, make them come in, put topsoil, hydroseed it, and then for us to go back in and have to tear up the hydroseeding and the sod.
Is Park Board meeting in July?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, I would suggest that Park Board meet and have them make the decision what they feel would be best with John down there, and get the timing and stuff, and then bring that back to council with their suggestions of what they feel would look best, since they're the ones brought forward, and go with that decision, if that sounds okay with council, at least you got a board making a decision on the sidewalks. Because it's Harold and you, and Steve, you're on board with that also, as far as having sidewalks around there. And then bring it back for the July meeting, and then by then, you could get John, who's gonna be at the meeting, to try to schedule it in, whether it's gonna be then, or whether it's gonna be in the fall when they pour. And hopefully by then Dennis will be back, too, that they can make it work. Is that all right, your counsel?
Sidewalk skirting sounds great.
It's a good thing.
It's just a matter, yeah, it's a matter of the correct, right timing. I trust John's judgment on that kind of stuff.
I do, too. I do, too. And he's the one that's got the schedule in front of him on what needs to be done for the rest of the summer.
I think we're just really, I'm sure, we're just lucky to have staff that's able to do that, Mayor.
One way or the other.
I just hate to see them close it down to pour concrete and stuff.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's in a hurry, frankly.
I agree with that.
Especially if it's a day like today.
Yeah.
Which was an amazing day to watch all of this.
Either way you do it, I mean, by the time you put the sidewalk in, you're still gonna have to grade it better, so you're...
Yeah, you are, you are.
One way or the other, you're gonna have to do some work. So we can stand down from picking up stones for a while? I just been throwing them in the pool.
Oh, have you? Oh, I see how you are.
This is a lot of discussion anymore on this report. There's a lot for you guys to discuss. Parks, WRA. Clear motion on the cost?
Are we talking about the refunds, Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
You had made a motion to accept the Park Board's recommendations on refunds.
I would second that motion.
Motion to approve the Park Board recommendation to offer refunds to individuals who run at Homecoming moved by Councilor Chamberlain, executed by Councilor Stickley. Is there any discussion? Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Stewart?
Yes.
And Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries.
I think the recommendation on a new air conditioner is kinda have to be a building and grounds meeting or something like that, I presume, for somebody to get some costs.
Or finance, one or the other, but it's a ground or finance, right? Once they get some quotes, did they get the quotes?
No, not that I know of.
They got two different people that they're looking at, though?
I don't know. John's gonna be looking into it.
That's the original AC in there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was oversized to begin with.
Yeah, it was noisy, I remember that. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, Rick, you're on again with tree commission.
Yeah, tree commission, the following day on Wednesday. There was only three of us at the meeting, so it was kind of abbreviated meeting. We talked about the Indian Hill and all the trees that were planted in there, and how they're doing. Some of the species are doing all right, some are not doing quite as well. Tom and Pete had met with a private resident about a tree that was concerned over, some of the neighbors were thinking it might fall in the house, and Tom and Pete had both given them their recommendation as to what they ought to do with it. Also, we talked about a Boy Scout, I'm not sure who it is, working for Eagle Scout, Eagle Badge, putting up some signage on some of the different tree species in the park. I'd walked the trails several different times, looking at some of the species, and I had to agree with Pete Carr, we're pretty fortunate with the different amounts of species in those woods that we have. Not every wood's has got such a variety as what there was, what those two do. I guess that's all we had. No recommendations or anything like that.
Did they look to see if there was any grant under for any signs or anything for some of them that we could find?
I think, I think some of this is falling under...
Yeah, so actually, yeah, so I think the young man's name is Levi Perkins, and we had the Trails Committee, Rotary Trails Committee formed a subcommittee to work with Levi and his mom on the proposal for signage for trees around the two woods perimeters. And actually, George Stuckey and his brother, I believe, had gone around both trails and made really cool-looking maps, and then indicating on the maps where the relevant trees are located. Using those maps, as part of the project, Levi's come up with a proposal for a particular sign construction, which was accepted, I guess, by the subcommittee a week or so ago, and Levi's then gonna present that to the Trails Committee for their review, to see if it's something they're interested in, and it's really looks kinda nice. They're signs about this large, and they're made out of material that's weather resistant, should last up to five or six years, and then just on metal posts. And Levi did a nice job in putting the proposal together. And I think the good news is, is that most of that cost will be part of, or paid for by the grant, the original $100,000 grant that Rotary received for work in the woods. Levi might have to raise a little bit of funding, but it'll be minimal, I think. So that'll be really nice to have those signs in there. Not sure the timing on all that, because we have some work to do on the surface of the trails. If you've been through there, you know it's a little rough right now, so we wanna get the trails back to being usable rather quickly, and then get a point where those sign posts can be, you know, put in. So, long answer to a short question.
The trail surface get roughed up during the planting? Is that what happened?
Well, it was during the pre-planting, a few weeks before, where we were trying to get out as many of the cut-down trees as we could, and it was just wet, and so it's kind of a mess in certain spots.
You got some heavy rain.
Yeah, it's been, this has been just an unbelievably wet spring and early summer.
Right. So, we're gonna have to...
No action?
Nope.
All right. Okay, Department heads. Chief Speaker?
Fire Department, I give immediate release out that we signed out today about our live fire training. We're having this coming Sunday, auto shootout. Also, what we're gonna be doing is kind of exploring there, work with the police department to have traffic control, and there shouldn't be any trouble. And we're spending our time getting ready for fireworks, third of July, so that's all I have.
What's weather supposed to be like Sunday?
Low eaves, cloudy.
No wind?
Hope not.
Wind happens, Rick, chief.
The chute fans stay open.
The chute does stay open.
Okay.
Will chutes stay open, huh?
What's your plan on that?
The plan is that it's going to stay open while they're doing the training, but during the live, when they start the fire to actually demolish the house, it'll be shut down at that time, they'll be able to use Bannister and Wagner as a detour, but we don't wanna take, wanna keep every precaution, keep people safe through that area, so we will have chute shut down during that time. But for most of the morning, it will be, it may be restricted one lane, but there'll still be two-way track.
What time are you gonna start it? I'll be by 7:30, eight o'clock, and then take lunch, probably, and then probably destroy the property shortly after lunch.
Okay. It'll be another day.
Just a couple of quick things. Our second session of Safety City started up. We are at 52 confirmed students, possibly 55 with the other three showing, made it there today, not sure if they did or not.
They're at the swimming pool.
They could be today, or they wish they were all at the swimming pool. We're still about $1,800 short on our funding goal, so give early and give often. For that, our conjunction with the fireworks, just a reminder, that's only a couple of weeks away. We will have Biddle Park shut down as we did in the past, so you need to be there by 9:45, probably at the very latest, otherwise you're gonna have to find alternate places to park, because each year we keep getting more and more people, and there's no more parking down there than what there was before.
And the lights go up the night before, correct?
Just on the streetlights.
Just the streetlights.
The park lights will be on until the beginning of show.
So if you happen to see that the streetlights are out for the third and fourth, that is customary, and tell the lesson, take care of that, and they'll be turning them back on on the fifth. But we will be getting it out on our Facebook page, website, however else we can get it out to the public, letting them know. It may be of a little inconvenience, but it's for their own safety and to make it as easy as possible to get that many people in and out of the park, so... Is there any question?
If we get, launch those a little farther north. There's a house right, right in the way, okay? Just a little bit. Okay, see what you can do. All right, thanks, chief.
And whose house is north of yours?
A lot of people come over to our house and they complain about just that little block view of it, okay?
So we're all coming to your house?
Yeah, sure.
What's your address?
Is this on 103?
Yes, it is on 103.
Jamie?
I don't have much to report. I was out in the office all last week at a conference, learned some good stuff, made some good contacts, also been keeping up on paying Dennis' bill, if you didn't notice how high they were this time around, so, just figured out. That's all, Mayor, I think we can...
I have changes to the vehicle law sent to Chief Torvitz, and he's reviewed them, and I think he's okay with what we've done. Working on those changes to the marijuana, the perifemilia section of the statute. Hopefully I'll get those to the chief in the next day or so. I think when we have those ready, then we'll be ready for a committee meeting, and we have pulled a sample, some sample legislation dealing with the use of boats on reservoirs, and I think we'll, we'll just present that to the committee at the time and talk about that. And I forgot to send that to you this afternoon.
You did.
I'll do that in the morning. Other than that, just working on some other, some other projects.
Busy.
Yes, appreciate it. It's always, always fun.
Anything for Tom? Okay, well, let's move on to our agenda. First readings. Resolution 2018-19 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tamco Capital Corporation for a new phone system.
I would make that motion.
Second.
It was Harold, yeah. Motion to place resolution 2018-19 on first reading moved by Councilor Stickley and seconded by Councilor Stewart. Is there any discussion? Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
And Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries. Second readings. Ordinance 2018-4 authorizing mayor to enter into a participatory agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation pertaining to the resurfacing project of State Route 108 and State Route 2.
I would make that motion. Second.
Motion to place ordinance 2018-4 on suspension moved by Councilor Stickley and seconded by Councilor Fry. Is there any discussion? Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Stewart?
Yes.
Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
And Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries.
So this project can begin quickly. Final reading?
Yeah. Next here. Okay, motion to place ordinance 2018-4 on final read moved by Councilor Chamberlain and seconded by Councilor Schneider. Councilor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councilor Schneider?
Yes.
Councilor Fry?
Yes.
Councilor Stewart?
Yes.
And Councilor Stickley?
Yes.
Five days, zero days, motion carries. Okay, we have nothing under third reading, and under new business, I did talk to Jeff, and he is doing well, and he actually was going to try to make the meeting today, and I told him that was not necessary, so he will probably be here soon. Tomorrow morning, we have our policy and procedures, little workshop, if anybody has the time, I think it would be great for any questions, Q and A time. Chief Torvitz, Tom is gonna be here, and Jamie and Rick, if you wanna come up, that would be great, too. I did go to my conference also, and I did find out a few more new interesting facts about policies and procedures with the council and mayor meetings, which I think would really be informational for all of our council and staff, so I will be sharing that tomorrow with everybody, so...
What time is that meeting, Mayor?
Nine o'clock. And then afterwards, we will be meeting at 11:00, is it, with Larry?
Paul, 11:00 with Larry?
Yeah. Not that it's gonna take it two hours to get through, but I know once we get talking...
It's only here, Council, you need to be online.
It's a short session, it's not a meeting, it's just gonna be a short session for you guys to ask any questions and answers. And, let's see, I think that's it. Anybody else have any new business?
I got just two items here. One, I talked to you earlier before the meeting, and to Jamie and that. Tom Brookholder emailed me Thursday night about the possibility of getting a machine or some way for people at the pool to use their debit cards, credit cards, because, you know, I thought it was just to buy season passes, and that by now, most of that would be purchased, but they said, no, they have people coming every day, said, we don't carry cash anymore, we wanna use our debit card to get in. So then the next thing, I went to Jamie, and city doesn't take Visa, and there's a 3.5% service charge, so people would have to know that. Then the next question came up, what about concession stand? Well, there's no, I don't think we have internet access over there to hook something up, so for that part, they would have to have cash, and not be able to use a debit card, because by now, there's no connection over there. So I'm just bringing it up, if anybody's got any ideas, suggestions, I told them, Tom, I'd bring it up, and I thought it was just a first couple of weeks of the year buying season pass issue, but they said, no, they've got people every day that wanna pay their three bucks to get in. pay their three bucks to get in using a debit card. I'm old school with cash.
Yeah, so.
You know, but people, dollar ninety dollars, they use their debit card.
Isn't there a charge every month besides the three percent?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
We'd have to charge them to change the difference. They'd have to know that if they used their debit, if they wanted to use it. I understand, it's a debit. But as far as concessions, they don't have, they don't have A debit machine at the concessions at the ballpark. I guess they, that would be a choice they would have to make, but as far as admissions, if that's something that they would wanna use and have, they would have to know that they're gonna get the surcharge of using the debit machine, just like anywhere else.
I told them I'd bring it up and see if anybody had any ideas, suggestions, go with it, get it, whatever.
I think it is a win for our, to use a debit card on a fifty cent concession item.
Yeah, not concessions. We're talking admissions.
I'm talking the
Just admissions only.
Admission, just admission.
And.
Do we pay, do we have to pay?
They would have to.
I think.
Women have to charge.
Okay, well, if we, do we know what that would be per?
We're charged approximately three and a half percent. We, we charge three and a half percent to cover our fees.
Okay, so in other words, if we made people using debit cards pay three and a quarter, we'd cover that?
Three and a half.
Or three and a half, or something like that?
So we would have to do that all the time.
They're gonna get charged really three and a half dollars?
Three and a half percent on three.
Or three and a half percent on three dollars. We're talking
Ninety cents.
Is there, I thought there was a monthly fee, too? There's not a monthly?
There is, but combined, our service fees, pro transaction, plus our monthly fees.
It's about three and a half?
Yeah.
Okay.
So whoever is at the, at the counter, when someone comes in and they pay three dollars, they're gonna have to put that three and a half percent onto that three dollars. They're gonna have to figure that out each time. Or that mom who's paying for four kids, now you got twelve dollars, that three and a half percent, they're gonna have to figure that out each time.
And are they going to be checking ID's to make sure that the person that has the debit card actually don't sell a card? I mean, we're talking sixteen-year-olds.
Or we put a sign up that says cash only.
That's what Steve is asking.
What do we wanna do? I, I told Tom I would check and see what, what we wanted to do, if it's worth the hassle or not. I don't, but when I went back Sunday afternoon, he wasn't there, the assistant director, Alexis Cartel, was there, and I asked her if it was just for purchasing the season passes. She said, no, we get it every day. People wanna just pay their
I think Tom needs to ask his staff first if they are even willing to do it and want to do it before we would make the decision. I think he needs to, to ask his staff, do you guys really want to take the time to do the debit machine, to figure it out, or do you just wanna take cash? I think they're the ones who are gonna have to do it, you know?
I mean, it's bad to ask the kids that are working there to do that, though, even.
Well, that's, it's up to Tom to ask them. If they say, yeah, we can do it, or if they can't, I think it's up to Tom to make that decision, whether he feels that if they're, if it's gonna work, or if it's gonna take too much time, and not to even deal with it. I think it's up to him, and then come back and tell you.
I, I don't, it would be, be nice if we could do it, but on the other hand, if we can't do it, I don't think it's that terribly inconvenient for somebody to go to their ATM, draw out fifteen dollars, if they're gonna take their kids there five days, and pay the cash.
I say, I say you guys ask, let's let Tom make that call.
I'll, I'll email him and see what's up. How about an ATM machine?
All right.
We could build it out with some
What's the second thing?
Oh, one other thing. A lady approached me the other day about, there's an access road from the, I think she said she's built with you, and she understood there's a problem with it, from where the storage cab or units are in Lynnfoot out to Airport Highway. And there's a gate on Airport Highway, she said
It's not an access road, it's
It's, it's a city.
It's, yeah, it's the old, the old railroad right way.
Yeah, but she said there are cars, there are trucks that'll go down, open that, and drive through. Is there any way we could put a lock on it, only city personnel has key?
It's already posted, then.
Well, I know it's posted, but
I think the only trucks
The gate, the gate, clear at the north end is locked, and I don't think
Is that locked?
Yeah, I don't think anybody's able to open that.
Where do they have access to that road? Is there something?
There's an access, there's limited access off of West Drive.
Okay.
And
Maybe that's where they're coming in at.
More likely they are.
Oh, they're taking the railroad, then?
The only, once in a great while, 'cause I look down, and once in a great while, the farmers, they utilize that to get to their fields, but since the gate's been put up on Airport Highway, that's limited, that
I just said I'd bring it up on the scene.
It's pretty bumpy, though.
All they've gotta do is call. If someone's back there, it's posted that it's not trespassing, we will
Okay.
Issue citation.
I was back there, but I was looking at high water. Maybe I shouldn't have been back there.
Well, as, as the city officially
Yeah, I was looking at the high water.
Yeah, she, she real, she told me she realized she'd called before, but I think a few people would get there, those people are gone, so, but she just said it's kind of annoying at times. I don't know if she lives
What, are they going back there to get to Pat West?
I don't know.
I don't know why they'd go back.
Yeah, why either, but
Now, the city trucks go back there to spray mosquitoes. They also go back there to dump stuff. ARS will go back there as well, because they have their dumpsters back there.
City goes back there a mo' too.
Yeah, okay.
You probably see some unmarked, unofficial-looking cars going back there.
Well, the other ones go back, it's from the tower.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
There are trucks going, and I guess I just have to know
We get stuff like that.
Know where, where exactly she's talking.
Right, okay.
'Cause very, very little traffic anymore. Steve goes anywhere north of the West Drive accident.
It's very bumpy. It's, it's, it's grassy.
I just told her I'd ask you, Rick, but she wasn't.
All right.
When will, when will the speed, how long will the speed box be on Lynnfoot Street?
Running late for work, she
I do know at what point that'll start, it starts picking up.
How fast can you get it?
There's a mailbox, I know. At this point, it starts picking up, so, I'm just wondering how much longer I'll be there.
I'm sure
It's not that it's an inconvenience, Rick.
Okay.
Okay, can we have a motion to pay the bills, as presented?
I would make that motion. No, a second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills is presented, moved by Counselor Stickle and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Counselor Stickle?
Yes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just one thing before we go, just Rick's concern about paying that bill, Jamie, what, I mean, is it automatic? Does we approve it and it goes, or is it?
Can we, can we
Can we hold back on that?
There's still money left to pay them.
Okay, all right.
There's still other money.
So this isn't the final pay?
No.
Okay, good.
That's okay.
I just didn't wanna pay that bill if that was part on the project that they did, and saying that it's completed, whatever.
I thought that we weren't gonna pay that for info until it was completed.
There still is an outstanding payment that they have that bill that's for.
Okay. Motion to approve and pay the bills is presented, moved by Counselor Stickle and seconded by Counselor Schneider. Is there any other discussion? Counselor Stickle?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stewart?
Yes.